Could I have your attention? We're about ready to begin, so if you can take a seat. It is four thirty. Welcome, everyone. As as a customer, we're gonna start by standing for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge, and then we'll get into our meeting. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we could have roll call, please.
Tom Eggers.
Here.
Wayne Barahona.
Here.
Brad Hen.
Here.
Ken Snyder.
Here.
Keith Hamel.
Here.
All right, moving on then to the approval of the agenda. We'll accept a motion for that.
So moved.
Support.
Any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Ken.
Here.
Hamel.
Aye.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
All right, now we have that portion of our meeting where we move into the public forum for items either on or off the agenda. Since there are three public hearings scheduled for agenda items down the road, I just wanna read comments in case any of you have plans to speak, to address the council. If it's an agenda item down the road, I'll ask that you wait till that time, but these same same guidelines would apply. So the public forum is the city council's opportunity to hear comments from you at the beginning of the council meeting for items both on and off the agenda, except for the public hearing items which I mentioned previously. During the public forum, the city council receives comments and refrains from speaking. The mayor may ask the city manager to follow up. The number of speakers will not usually be limited at the public forum. Total length of the forum is desired not to exceed a half hour and may be lengthened at the discretion of the mayor or the council. Anyone who wants to speak during the public comment period should do the following. Number one, raise your hand to be recognized by the mayor, then come to the podium and state your name and address. If you have handouts, please give them to the clerk. Be concise and limit your comments to four minutes. You may not save time for later or yield them, yield the remainder of your time to someone else, and after speaking, please be seated. Number three, if you are addressing a matter on the agenda, state the agenda item you're speaking about, and if you're speaking of more than one agenda item, rearrange your arrange your comments in chronological order. Number four, try not to duplicate information that has already been presented. Number five, direct comments to the entire council, not to an individual. Questions and issues raised during this time will generally not be answered until later. Maintain a courteous and respectful manner. And finally, if you are a presenter of an item which has been formally placed on the council agenda, this public forum process does not apply, although you are asked to be succinct in your presentation. So with that, are there any public comments that anybody would like to make at this time? Okay, seeing none. We will then move on to the consent agenda, and I will accept the motion to approve those items. Our motion.
Support.
Any comments? Roll call, please.
Hamel.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Ken.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
All right, thank you. No old business, so we move on then to item number six, which is the budget amendment for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. At this time, I would like to open the public hearing. Are there any comments from anyone at this time regarding the budget amendment item? Seeing none. Accept a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Ken.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
All right, then, moving on to item B. Consider the affiliation agreement between SCAT and the Boyd Ambulance. Oh, you're right, sorry, thank you. All right, that's right, we have to approve the amendment under item A sub point two. We have the amendment, we'll take a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Snyder.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Ken.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
All right, then, moving on to consider the affiliation agreement between SCAT and the Boyd Ambulance. Any comments from you, Sam?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Kristin Hahn, the director of our ambulance team, let me know she's on a call, so she's unable to be here. Not need to feel, you do not need to feel pressured to approve this today. You're welcome to continue it. I do think it's well explained, and you could certainly move forward with it, but you're also welcome to continue the item.
From what I understand, we're basically putting in writing an agreement that has been informally in place for a number of years.
Yes, and it is now, it is an agreement, an affiliation that's been made formal by changes to the Iowa administrative code.
There are letters of support in our packets from both the SCAT director as well as Brent Stevens, the Boyd Ambulance director. I don't really see a downside for approving this now unless someone feels differently.
I would most likely accept the resolution.
Good.
I'll support.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Snyder.
Aye.
Ken.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
All right, our next item calls for setting a hearing for December fifteen, two thousand twenty-one, to facilitate the demolition of the former Bethel church site and a transition to housing. Any comments, Sam?
I'll just stand for questions if there are any.
Hearing none. We need a motion then to approve that hearing for next week, our next meeting, correct? The fifteenth?
Be December.
Oh, no, that's not, two weeks, it'll be a month from now.
Yes.
Okay.
So moved.
Support.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Barahona.
Aye.
Ken.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Eggers.
Abstain.
Okay. Moving right along. Item number seven, the urban revitalization plan updates. And we'll do move on to item A there first. Open a public hearing regarding the Prairie Trail multi-family residential urban revitalization plan. Are there any wishing to speak addressing that point at this time? Seeing any, so a motion to close the hearing, please.
So moved.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Eggers.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Ken.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Then item B, open a public hearing to consider the Trilogy multi-residential urban. Too much going on here. Okay, yes, let's approve the motion to approve the resolution first of all before we move on.
So moved.
Support.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Ken.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
All right, then, on to the Trilogy multi-residential urban revitalization plan. I'd like to open the public hearing on that one. Any wishing to address the council? A motion to close the hearing, please.
So moved.
Support.
Roll call.
Barahona.
Aye.
Ken.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
All right, third time's a charm. Let's have a, I would consider motion to adopt the resolution regarding the proposed amendment number two to the Trilogy multi-residential urban revitalization plan.
So moved.
Support.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Hamel.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Ken.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
All right. Not farther along than I thought we'd be at this time. All right, Jake, I thought we'd keep you here for at least a half hour before you could speak, but if you would step forward, Jake Kerr with the Sheldon Rec Department.
Yeah, same, same, I thought I was gonna be here a little longer, too. Thanks for having me, guys, in front of you. We'll just go over our yearly outdoor revenue report, and I can answer any questions that you guys may have on that as well. This year, we had a great year. It's one of our best years that we've had in a while, as you can see by our numbers. One of our best concession years in a while. Pool memberships are up, our daily fees up, our swimming lessons are pretty consistent. But overall, this past summer has been a great year for our outdoor aquatic center. Some improvements we made over the years, we've added new shades to our outdoor aquatic center, as well as last summer, we painted our pool as well, so you can kinda see that as well. So, does anyone have any questions on, yeah?
Any, can you shed any light on the huge increase on the outdoor spring soccer numbers?
Uh.
It's just growing that enthusiastically, or what?
Um, I think one possibility was we weren't allowed, or we weren't able to do indoor soccer because of COVID at the time, so that might have been it, too, as well.
Okay.
But also, we are seeing a lot of growth in soccer, too, as well, in our community, and that one thing to contribute is obviously having the soccer program now at the high school as well. We saw some big improvements from our summer rec soccer, so we do it in the summer, too. So we have big improvements on that as well, so.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, Mike. Yeah, so, you know, for us, for going, moving on to the recreation report, then, unless, did anyone have any questions on the pool at all? Okay. Going with the summer rec last year, or you could say this year, it's one of Benner's biggest years, too, for recreation without our indoor soccer program, too. Some of the great things that have been in the past couple of years is we're getting good partnerships with the Sheldon Community School now. So they're partnering with us with flag football, basketball, other things, which is gets the kids more involved, and we're seeing a lot, great things, and hearing good things from parents, too. So we appreciate those partnerships with the Sheldon Community School District, and I know the kids enjoy it as well, so.
Just looking at the difference between last year, it's fifty-six percent increase in registrations, so.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Yep, so, yeah.
That's what we wanna see.
Yeah, yeah, and like I said, we we thank the Sheldon Community School District, 'cause I know that's a big, a big improvement, too, having them help us, so. What's that? Y- y- yeah, yeah, some of it was.
It's an abnormally low number. Right.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, summer rec was sadly kind of a capush on the whole thing, so.
It shows a lot of impact, though, that, you know, I mean, your department still had to facilitate all that.
Yeah, that wasn't fun, but we got through it.
Jake, what challenges are you seeing from the rec side?
Well, obviously, every year, currency just volunteers. I think we're also seeing a, from a rec of how competitive we wanna be from parents. You know, we're rec, and that's where we're trying to find that balance of competitiveness and rec at the same time, if you know, if you know what I mean, on that aspect. So that's one of the challenges we're kinda seeing, is how we handle that situation, so.
Do you get a lot of parental input as far as those kinda things go? Like, you know, you're being too soft, you're being too hard, you know, the whole.
Sometimes you do.
Goldie Locks in the Three Bears scenario?
Yeah, sometimes you do, 'cause everyone has their own opinion, which is fine. But sports, as we know, is a touchy subject. I mean, even Nick Saban, who's the greatest college football coach of all time, gets, gets some feedback, some negative feedback, so. So.
I was once, a coach once made the comment, the best coaching job would be to coach at an orphanage.
Yeah, yeah, so, but yeah, that's that's kinda about really it for us, is finding that competitive, where we wanna be at. You know, like I said, everyone has their own opinion on how rec should be ran, or how we need to be more competitive or non-competitive, so. But our goal is to obviously let everyone play, so.
Do you have anything coming up on the horizon, any changes, anything real groundbreaking or revolutionary?
Like, from the pool, we're in the minor discussions of looking at a pool splash pad for the outdoor aquatic center. That's in our CIP. And the reason for that is to, we're not seeing as much younger, like, first, newborn, I mean, to like second-year-olds. There's, our aquatic center isn't really meant for them, kind of. So we're kinda looking at that stage as right now, and then, and then just when it comes to rec, we're looking at some other, obviously, every year, we're trying to fix programs, make 'em better. That's our goal. So we're having discussions on our baseball, softball program, on how to, what we can do to improve that as well, so.
And if anyone out there wanted to volunteer to help coach or run one of these programs, what can they do?
Uh, yeah, so, I mean, our, ours is really easy during registration. You can just, when you sign up for, you can just say yes, that's all you have to do, and all of our volunteers get discounts as well, so. It's about a ninety percent discount from the activity, so.
Well, I'll just say, I'll take the political approach that those who can do, those who cannot, or do not do not have, forfeit the right to complain about it, so. Good, good political non-answer, thank you, Jake.
Is there any other questions? Awesome, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jake.
If there's anything that ever comes up, you're more than welcome to contact me on my email or my cellphone, or, or my, my office phone, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on then to the introduction of the capital improvement plan updates. There should have been a copy, I think you all have copy lane on your, by your chair, right?
Yeah, I'm not sure how well the Excel file opens on the iPad, and so I printed off the emergency services, CIP on the larger sheets, and the rest of it can be opened in the PDFs. If I might?
Yes, sir.
So the idea of being, you know, a capital improvements process is not a, it's not a budget document. It helps prepare for the budget document, so it's a feeder, kinda helps feed into the budget and in terms of planning. And I thought, rather than have it be a one-agenda item, having it on two different agendas would make sense, give you a chance to provide feedback, ask questions on the, on the plans. We have some of the departments represented, and we can answer your questions, and then have a more complete discussion and wrap it, wrap up the CIP portion of it at the next meeting, December one meeting. So to further elaborate, if I can, the, the draft. Angie and I have talked about this, right now, we have the five-year citywide CIP plan being done in a separate piece of software, and then the fifteen-year CIP plan for the four emergency services branches. We started that a few years ago. Decided, because we put so much effort into that, we decided to keep that up. And, but I think next year, we'll probably do away with the CIP separate software and have everything in an Excel spreadsheet, so we just have one, one spreadsheet, since we have some redundancy between the five-year and the fifteen-year for the four emergency services. So next year, you would probably just see the two attachments, the spreadsheet for the departments, and then, and then the airport is a bit of a separate process.
Are there any questions or comments on these plans? Hearing none, no action required, just received information.
No, we, we do have Rob here from the, from the airport. I don't know if there's anything, if you had any questions on the airport of CIP, where the, the board considered the CIP, and then now it's been submitted to the FAA for a response, and then, and then it will, we'll have this on the December one agenda. Hopefully, we can wrap it up on December one, because the next airport board meeting is not until the fourteenth, and then it would still have to be ratified by the council, and that'd be the fifteenth, and I think it's due to the FAA that week, so it would be.
Traditionally, are they fairly quick in returning the, the FAA? Do you know?
Todd, do you know how fast the FAA?
Well, that's just the draft. In which they've already commented on, said, let's get the planning changes, the actual plan will be coming the next council meeting, formal approval. And it gets submitted, and then I don't think we'll be here till, right, it'll be right on, I think. I think it's, I think we will be here.
Okay.
What I have linked, I think, is what will be linked on December one, correct? I think I have the latest version linked to today's, okay.
We will need formal council action on that one.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion regarding CIP?
First, I think the airport board has preliminarily approved it already, so if the FAA doesn't have any major changes, I think we can just finish it up on the first.
Okay. Anything else? I'd like to move on then to our city manager's report.
Speaks for itself.
Any questions for Sam? Hearing none. Then we'll move down the list here. Todd, does anything you wanna address council regarding anything?
Sure, I'll just maybe fill you in on a couple of project updates. The streets, Oak Pine, North Fifth, South Third, and so on. They are finishing up of just a couple of punch list items yet today. They, they were supposed to make final completion on Monday, slightly behind, but very fine. They'll have to come back in the spring for seating, some other warranty things, but they're essentially finished up there, holstein is. Clavinga is making decent progress on the underground at a crossroads north face two. They're still on pace and hope to get underground in yet this fall, paving to happen next spring. Water plant, we recently completed the filter media replacement. That was a fairly, fairly tough project, I guess, or it can be sometimes for Keith and Dave to deal with, so kudos to that guys, to get that finished up. That media should last us another twenty-five plus years. We last replaced it twenty-two years ago, and I anticipate this batch of media lasting longer, just simply because, once we receive the Lewis and Clark water, we'll be putting less water, that was about a eighty thousand dollar project. Some stuff that's in the hopper for next year. We anticipate bidding Rainbow Drive, the downtown alley and parking lot project, and the downtown overlay project, all in January, is our current goal towards that. So we're probably in December. Some, you know, set for hearings for bid openings coming in January. Sewer lining project on Fourth Street and Washington Avenue. That was a very simple project that turned out to be rather complicated. They have finished that. Beck is reviewing the last of the camera documents after they came back in and grouted the services, so I anticipate that project closing there in December or for January. Seems like I got one more I should touch up. I'll put there for today unless you got any questions.
Hearing none. We want courage, is there anything you'd like to address us with?
No, thank you.
All right. Ange?
No, thank you.
Micah?
No, thank you.
Council to my left. To my right.
I do have a question for Todd, and I know you probably don't have a clean answer yet, but as we all know, the infrastructure bill, it was signed, and that's closely related to Lewis and Clark, and I'm sure you guys are trying to figure out as a board what that means for the future. So I, I know that's good, that I believe the funding, total funding for the project was part of that bill. Can you confirm that?
Yes, there was money in that bill for the roll water projects that are under the Bureau of Reclamation. I believe the number is close to a billion to, to finish those projects. The money still has to get to the Bureau, and the Bureau still has to give us our share. I think we're in line to get like, assumed, a hundred twenty-five million, which almost takes us to the finish line. The thing to be debated there yet is the cap or the ceiling for that project is still there, so there could be some extra money that still has to be, you know, gotten from the, from the finish beyond that, but it should be. I don't have a date yet.
I knew you wouldn't, but I just wanted to.
Uh, speaking.
Get it on record that, that we're.
That it is good for us, yeah.
It was good for us.
Yeah, absolutely. I don't, you know, what it, what it should do, assuming the Bureau gives the hundred twenty-five million to Lewis and Clark, what it should do is pretty well guarantee our water delivery by twenty twenty-four, because there's no longer a statement that needs to be made as long as federal funding continues at the current rate, right? So it won't necessarily get us water any sooner, but it should get us, help us reach the finish line at that date. Speaking of Lewis and Clark, they did award the tower contract west of town not so long ago. We had a pre-construction meeting on that last week. Caldwell plans on starting that project March of twenty-two. They're gonna go through the submittal process over here, take off on construction.
And what kind of timeline on that?
Uh, two.
Two years?
Yeah. Two, two-year construct, they figure it'll take two construction seasons to build it.
How far west of town is that?
From the college, from NCC, Highway eighteen and NCC, one mile north and a mile and a half west.
In the area of the roll water tower?
Yeah, we are just east of that roll water tower, on the, on south side of the road, just east of that. Yep. And since I got the mic and I'm talking, the other thing, traffic light. Preliminary plans have been sent to the DOT for review. Still waiting for comments, but that's, that's where that project is.
Okay. Thanks, Todd. All right, the only comment I have next week is Thanksgiving. The city offices will be closed Thursday and Friday of next week. For those of you that are traveling, I wish you well and safe travels, and I wish you all a blessed Thanksgiving. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Close session.
Or to move into closed session, yes.
Let's all make that motion.
Pretty good. Roll call, please.
Excuse me, Eggers.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Ken.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Aye.